I got it, John.
Okay.
Good to go. All right, welcome everybody to the May 5th meeting of the Barrington Planning Board. As Chair of the Barrington Planning Board, due to the COVID-19 coronavirus crisis, and in accordance with the Governor Sununu's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order
Unknown participant is now joining.
2020-04, this board is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to the meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, this is to confirm that we are utilizing Microsoft Teams for this electronic meeting. All members of the board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through the Microsoft Team, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and if necessary, participate in the meeting through dialing the following phone number: 603-664-0240 and the conference ID for the Teams meeting. First, we'll have members of the board that are out there. Roll call, I believe we have Andy Knapp.
Yes, I'm here.
Jeff Brand.
Brand, aye.
Ron Allard.
Allard present.
Steve Diamond. I hear you very faintly. Myself, James Jenison, and Donna, are you out there? I don't recognize the phone number.
Yep, it's 69.
All right, Donna Masucci is present, and Rodney Boyer, not present. And as well, we also have on the phone John Huckins, Code Enforcement Officer, Town Planner, Marcia Gassis, and Land Use Administrative Assistant Barbara Irvine. We are going to put the minutes to the end again today so we can get through some more business. So that puts first on the agenda, Mr. Todd Green, Barrington Shores LLC, request by applicant for expansion of 28 seasonal campsites and waiver at seven Barrington Shores. So whoever is going to take the mic first, we're ready for you.
Yes, this is Ray Visson from Stone Law Survey. I'm representing Mr. Green and the Barrington Shores LLC. We are actually asking for a continuance to the June 2nd meeting. We are still working on completing some of the items from the previous meeting.
Good. Does the board have any questions for Mr. Visson? There's no objection to the continuance to the June 2nd meeting. I will entertain a motion to continue until June 2nd.
I make a motion to continue the application for the shores camp until June 2nd.
I second that.
It's a motion by Jeff Brand and a second by Steve Diamond. Roll call vote, Knapp.
Knapp, aye.
Masucci.
Aye.
Diamond.
Diamond, aye.
Brand. I don't know who's bagging in the background. Allard.
Allard, aye.
And Jenison, aye. Thank you so much, Ray. We'll see you June 2nd.
Thank you.
Stop the hammering. All right, next up, we have Wanda Lee and Richard Walker Jr., request by applicant Jesse Anderson for proposed construction of a welding and fabrication building with associated parking on Colonial Way, map 220 lot 29.
Unknown participant is now exiting.
Do we have someone here presenting on behalf?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. This is Scott Lawler from Norway Plains Associates. I'm here representing Richard and Wanda Walker.
Len, aye.
Anderson.
Is now exiting.
Welding. We are here tonight to present a site plan located at tax map 220, lot 29, located off of Colonial Way near the end of the cul-de-sac. This parcel is owned by Richard and Wanda Walker. It is approximately 5.59 acres in size. It is zone regional commercial and also lies within the stratified drift aquifer overlay. As part of our comprehensive on-the-site topographic survey, we have the wetlands delineated by Joel Noel, certified wetland scientist. The parcel is generally flat and it's currently vacant, although the Anderson has started doing a little bit of land clearing and preparatory for the proposed site plan. There are utilities located, overhead utility wires located on Colonial Way, and there's a fire cistern located across the street from the proposed project. Anderson Welding, Anderson Properties LLC and Anderson Welding is proposing a 6,000-square-foot welding and fabrication building. They are proposing 12 proposed parking spaces, one of which will be ADA accessible. Their main access will be a driveway off Colonial Way paved that will also service the six parking spaces in the front of the building. The remainder of the side and rear of the parking area is currently going to be gravel with future being paved at a later date. We have designed the stormwater management system to collect all the stormwater generated from the impervious surfaces from the driveway and all around the building and the parking to be directed to the treatment swale located in the south, excuse me, in the western, southwestern corner of the development. That treatment swale will then direct stormwater around the back of the parking area and into a grass-lined detention basin. That detention basin will attenuate the peak storm event runoff and release it to an outlet structure at a controlled rate matching the pre-development stormwater rate of discharge. Majority of the stormwater will then flow through the wetlands slowly, eventually reaching a culvert underneath Colonial Way and off the property. The, on the building, the proposed building, again 6,000 square feet, 600 by 100, will be steel-framed with an eve height around 20 feet and the peak elevation of 25 feet. We'll have some, two overhead doors, one located in the rear and one on the southerly, easterly edge. There will be a pedestrian door accessing the building on the sides and front. This building will be serviced by onsite septic and an onsite well. The septic system has been designed and has been included in this packet. We have not submitted the application to the Department of Environmental Services as we wanted to get through the local approval process to avoid unnecessary design review changes at DES. But it has essentially been designed to accommodate the minimum commercial septic system of 300 gallons per day design flow. They will be, need to install one utility pole to get the power across Colonial Way, at which point the utilities will be run underground to the building. We propose some landscaping, screening, some evergreens located at the rear of the site to buffer the development and the walkers, as well as some landscaping along the cul-de-sac to provide again a little bit of screening of the, from the cul-de-sac. A new sign and some landscaping will be installed along the edge of the driveway by the entrance. The screen that you see now is the lighting illumination plan. The lights that we're proposing will be three wall-mounted lights and two pole-mounted lights. These lights will be LED and they're all downcasted and all will meet dark sky compliant. The business will employ around 10 to 12 employees at this time. I believe Mr. Anderson and his wife are with us tonight, and should the board have questions about what they are proposing, they could address those to the board. I believe that concludes the general presentation. I am obviously here to answer any questions that the board may have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Does the board have questions?
I have some, Jeff Brand, I have some questions about the plans and a couple of things. One of the things that noted, and this was in the write-up, that this parking area to the side and rear of the building where the loading/unloading doors are would be gravel to be paved at a later time. In looking at the drainage analysis, it states that this, that when the analysis was done, that the area for unloading and loading, which would be along the side in the rear, would be paved. So how does that affect the drainage analysis by not being paved?
If I can answer that, Mr. Chairman, the, the analysis was done assuming pavement because that has a coefficient, runoff coefficient of 98. And HDS, Alteration Terrain Bureau, essentially views gravel, hard-packed gravel parking and impervious battubinous concrete to be one and the same. So essentially, if he, if the Andersons, when they choose to pave this, will not increase the amount of runoff. So we essentially took the best-case scenario in the drainage analysis.
All right.
Jeff? That's one question. Yeah, I've got several more. If you want to go next, Steve, go ahead and we can go back and forth.
Sure. So you said there are 12 employees and the half of the parking essentially is in the unpaid, paved area. Employees will be year-round, including in the winter. I guess my concern is with plowing, it won't, it might just be, or shape itself differently.
I don't know if I'm the only one. I'm having trouble hearing you, Steve. I don't know if it's just me or...
I'll turn, I'll turn it up a little.
It's, it's just more choppy than, than the volume.
Oh. I'll close some things.
Mr. Lawler, did you get the gist of the question?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I did not.
I believe, and he can correct me if I'm mistaken, but I think he was asking about parking on the unpaved portions during the winter months and plowing. Was that the gist of it, Steve?
Yes.
The, I don't believe it'll pose any problems. You know, there's ample space around the perimeter for employees to park if necessary and move their vehicles during plowing.
Did you have more?
To...
I'm sorry.
My concern is related to... Uh... It may... Of, I, no.
Steve, we only got about 10% of that.
Maybe, I don't know if you, if you call in to the audio?
I better, I guess.
This is Connor, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I think either call in or another thing you could try, Steve, is turning off your video.
Okay.
If it has a bandwidth thing, not sending your video might improve the audio quality. So you could try either one.
Jeff, you want to go ahead and ask a question while we work on Steve's?
First off, with regards to the plan, CE1 is missing in the legend, the jurisdictional wetland that's shown on the legends of other sheets. So on that sheet, it's an unidentified marking.
We, we can clearly add that to the plan, so.
If you look at up there, well, it's on that one. Is that, is that, is that sheet E1? Which is the, the first existing features plan? No, that's the overall site plan. So that's C1. E1 is your existing features plan.
You're correct. We'll, we'll amend the plans accordingly.
All right. On E1, C1, whichever sheet you want to go to, there appears to be a structure in the southwest corner. What, what is that structure? It's right just beyond the setback? Yeah. What is that?
It's a shed that's owned by Mr. Walker.
I see. But it's on, it's on this land.
That is, that is correct.
Okay. I just didn't see it identified. All right. The, well, being in the region of commercial, a question about, are there going to be any regulated substances in this facility? And if so, any in quantities or containers greater than five gallons?
I'm going to let Mr. Anderson address those if it's available.
Yep. This is Jesse Anderson, and there will not be any controlled substances other than, you know, the typical gases that are used in the welding industry. We don't store paints or any liquids or anything like that onsite.
What about fuels?
Fuels, nothing out of the ordinary. We might have a five-gallon can of diesel for some of our equipment, like such as a skid steer and then propane tanks for our fork trucks.
Propane tanks under the definition aren't covered anyway, so not a problem. How are you going to heat the belt?
The, the building is being proposed with a propane radiant heating system.
Okay. All right. That's good.
What about oxygen or acetylene?
Jeff, I have a question on that, if you don't mind me hopping in. Mr. Anderson, are you using any inerting gases? Any, any, any large quantities, annealing ovens or anything like that for control of temperature while fabricating or inerting from the standpoint that you're looking to make sure you don't have air pockets and air gaps in your welds?
Yes, we use an argon gas, which is an inert gas, and it's only used per, per basis of the fabrication. So we have 300 tanks, kind of like your average, I guess, gas cylinder as far as an industrial gas size. So it's not like we use a, anything larger than a size 300 tank. We don't have any argon trailers or anything like that. It's a very small quantity.
No, but I'm assuming it's probably going to be stored outside on a pad and then somebody like Airgas or like that will be responsible for managing that?
No, no, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And then usually, usually you would see a pad out there and that's going to be a fenced-in area because it's got to be contained? And then also your fittings coming in all need to be, I think everything has to be stainless from that standpoint?
Yes.
And I know there's usually, like, Airgas has permitting or whoever the supplier happens to be, I just, because it's the known one down the road here. But typically, there is some permitting tied to that.
Permitting or licensing, yes. Airgas would be, you know, the qualified personnel to be able to distribute that to us, yes.
Right. It's used something like, knowing this is a welding fabrication shop, you would, we would want to know the proposed location of that, especially from an, from a fire standpoint.
Yep. We, I will certainly do as Scott, we will, you know, we can put that on the drawing. I, I just, I do want to be clear though, that we will not have a liquid tank or anything. So when you drive by an Airgas and you see how they have it in a fenced-in area where, you know, you can see the, the condensing, I guess, and the liquid faction process of like a liquid nitrogen tank. It's nothing like that that we will have. We will have individual storage cylinders.
What about oxygen or acetylene?
Oxy-acetylene, we will have that as well. Oxygen and acetylene will be stored in two separate locations as for obvious reasons. We do not keep a large quantity. The majority of oxy-acetylene that we have is kept on our welding vehicles. So I, I'd like to point out that our business, we do pre-fabrication for utility construction companies and a lot of our work is onsite. So very, I don't want to say very minimum, but a big portion of our, our industry and our business is performing work onsite. So all of our welders have their own company vehicles that are equipped with welding machines and the equipment that they need to be able to go onsite. So any oxy-acetylene that would be stored at this facility would be for really replenishing the used equipment off of the vehicles.
So this is Chairman James Jenison. So I guess with the questions being asked, I guess just noting where that's going to be stored in the facility, inside or outside the facility, so there's some understanding of quantities and location, I guess, is where the questions are all leaning towards.
Okay. Yep, yeah.
Now we're to prove MSDSC to go to the fire.
Right. I mean, typically like argon, carbon dioxide, helium, hydrogen, nitrogen, oxygen are all common gases in the welding industry. Are you, what, are you, I'm assuming you have a method for cutting this, so the material are, do you, saw cutting, are you water jetting, are you plasma cutting, like?
A lot of the pre-fabrication that we do that is in, in-house, which would be at this facility, would be saw cut. The reason being, it's just more cost-effective to do it that way than it is for, you know, the oxy-acetylene. That's why our vehicles are equipped with the oxy-acetylene. So we won't be doing a lot of fuel cutting in this location. There might be the occasional time where we have to get involved with that, but it's not a primary, primarily source of us to prep and cut any of the pre-fabricated pipe that we do.
Mm-hmm. I'm assuming, so if you're saw cutting, it's a, it'll be like a standard oil-based saw? Or we use a water-based coolant depending on the material?
It's an oil base that we use. It's a contained, basically like a port-a-band, port-a-band with a fixed base. So it's basically a small bandsaw that would do up to like a 12-inch pipe that we get into.
Yep. Yeah, and it's usually got a recirculating pump and it flows the coolant all the way.
Exactly, exactly, yep.
Very familiar with them.
Mr. Chairman, can I step in for a second? I've, as I've noted to Marcia and Barbara, I do have another planning board that I need to virtually transport myself to momentarily.
Sure.
Although all these questions in regards to the operation of the business are more than justified, I was wondering if we could maybe focus on the site plan questions that the board may have, at which point then I'm going to turn the presentation over to my colleague Joel, and he can, you know, answer some of the less technical, or Jesse Anderson can answer some of the more technical questions about the operation of this business.
All right, yes, the board question. Steve, did you have an opportunity to get your question answered?
I have another one. I noticed the roof pitch is pretty flat. What, what is the surface of the roofing and how much snow load can it take?
The roof, roof pitch is, the building is metal and presumably the roof is also metal. It's a 212 pitch, and it's being engineered and set of drawings will be submitted as part of the building permit, presumably at the requirements of the local authority of jurisdiction.
John Huckins, can you explain what your understanding of the snow load capability of this roof is?
The snow load has to be a minimum of a 70-pound ground snow load. Most of these male buildings come through at closer to 100, usually when they bring me an engineered design. But as long as they meet the 70, they meet our local requirements.
About, about what that, what does that mean in terms of feet of snow?
What does it mean in terms of what?
Feet of snow.
It's designed for our local conditions. The state has snow loading for different parts of the state, and the town of Barrington is a 70-pound ground snow load is how they do it. It's not, I don't know how many feet and stuff that is. I just know that the design of the structure has to be able to meet the 10-pound dead load and, well, because it's a metal building, this, then it'll be a little higher. But it's the dead load of the materials plus the 70-pound ground snow load is the minimum thing, and all these buildings come with an engineered design showing me that it meets or exceeds that.
Yeah, Steve, my limited knowledge in the snow load is also that it, it can't be strictly feet of snow because of, you know, water capacity and the snow itself. Sometimes you get 10 inches, it's heavy, and two feet, it's light. So that's why they go with that number and not an inch type.
Great. The other aspect of this, though, especially with a slippery, it could go flying out a significant distance when it does let go in a large chunk at such a moderate pitch. If it was deeper, it would let, lose snow more frequently in smaller amounts.
It appears to me that they have no parking under that area, and I imagine it would be landscaped, and I'm sure they're all familiar with the downside of metal roofs and ice and snow that comes off them, but it's good to note.
Okay.
Well, typically, yeah, particularly on the side of the building, you're going to have that one big door for loading and unloading. Typically, in that situation, they would put, it's, it's like a spike.
Roof.
Roof rail.
Yeah.
Here to prevent that happening. Anything.
We can focus a little more on building construction afterwards, but in interest to getting Mr. Lawler out of here if there's questions about.
Okay, so going to the sheet L4 for the illumination, I could not read the illumination numbers to compare it to the table. So first off though, can I assume that you were using from table seven in the Site View Regulation, you were using the, it goes high, medium, low, the low category when doing the evaluation? Yeah, that's how it looks on my diagram too, so I have no idea what the numbers are.
The lighting plan that was prepared by Sharon Incorporated, they had a copy of the Barrington ordinances when they prepared it, and I do believe it meets the requirements.
Okay, well, we can't validate that because we can't read the diagram, number one.
Yeah, I was, I did send an updated plan to Barbara, or Marcia, when they had realized that it was unreadable. Apparently it wasn't loaded up with this plan set.
The, it, the PDF, we might have that in the, in the email form because...
All right. Expedite.
Jeff, before you leave that, Scott, I think we need that because the, it seems to me with the light locations, that front parking lot, I would be surprised if it needs to require light levels there.
What's, what are the numbers we're looking for? I'm pulling out the big set now.
It's greater than...
The big set's not very readable either. We really need the, we need the PDF that was, was sent, which would not be this original one.
This is Connor. If somebody can email it to me, I can get it up on the screen for everyone.
Does anybody have it?
Well, he's got to get going. I have other issues though with the, with that... Well, he's got to get going. I have other issues though with the, uh, with that lighting plan. There, there's, you know, it specifically says that, uh, the lighting illumination plan, uh, at a minimum will include specification details for the lighting fixtures. There's a little table at the top that simply gives us some kind of product numbers, but no information. Uh, there's the, the, uh, site review regulations state that, you know, we're supposed to see specific details. Uh, we're supposed to have a drawing of all relevant building elevation showing the fixtures, which at least was not included in my, uh, my package, uh, of the plan. So I don't know that they exist. So, uh, it's, it's just to not be able to read it. There's a couple of other deficiencies, uh, with respect to the regulations.
Who, we losing? Mr. Lawler, did you get that?
I did. Um, I, yeah, I'm sorry. I did look at the, at our PDF, uh, which demonstrates that the, the maximum foot candles, uh, that those, uh, numbers that are unreadable is 1.4 at on the, 1.6 on the pavement, and then it goes out to zero well before it gets, uh, outside of the range that you see all the, the dots.
Hold on, I'm going to forward, forward this over to Connor.
So it's above a minimum of 0.2 and it's got to be less than 0.8. So that ca- category.
Yeah, Scott, based on that information, that would meet the requirements. Maximum is 0.8. So you have hot spots and cold, new cold spots on this lighting plan?
Correct. I, I do see a point one or two point nines, um, located at the corner by the proposed building. Um, and then all the rest is, uh, below that point. Uh, and all the parking is in the, in the point one to point two range or higher.
It's got to be point two or higher. And I think the pay parking area, there doesn't seem to be a light poles in that area. So I'm, uh, that's the area I'm particularly concerned about. It seems to be the prime parking area and the poles don't seem to illuminate that area.
Well, I think that, yeah, I think that front parking area is illuminated by a single light on the front of the building, isn't it? At least what, that's what's proposed.
That's correct.
Which means it may require a couple of lights on the front in order to bring that parking area into compliance. Point one is less than the standard.
So some updates to the, uh, lighting plan I think are in order. Um.
And Scott, I have one quick question. On the cover sheet, you say no DOT parking permit is required. Is that because Colonial Way is already permitted?
That is correct. As far as I'm aware. There are several businesses that take access off it currently.
And well, um, yeah, and I don't know if this shouldn't be a note on the plan, but, uh, the, uh, road agent went out and looked at it. Um, Commerce Way is not, Colonial Way is not in great shape to begin with. And there's a, a likelihood that it'll further. There needs to be somewhere that any, any damage that's done during construction needs to be repaired post-inspection.
Connor, did that plan go through to you?
I don't have an email of the plan yet.
Uh, oh, a question that came up from the, uh, fire chief. Is, is there an intent to put a gate on that driveway?
Um, Mr. Anderson, do you want to answer that?
Uh, I believe, yes, we will be putting a gate on the, the end of the driveway to protect any of the property or assets that we have back there.
All right. Well, that, is that reflected in the drawings?
It is not.
All right. Well, that needs to be added and the fire chief requested that, uh, that that gate, uh, be one of those that allows emergent access. Uh, he calls it a Knox box system. So the fire trucks can get in there if they're, you know, if facility's down and starts.
Yeah, we, we can add that to the plan.
Okay. And the police chief said that at the intersection of the, there needs to be a stop sign. Is he talking, are you aware if he's talking about the intersection of the driveway into Colonial Way?
I am not aware of, uh, which location he's referring to, but we can add a stop sign at the end of Colonial Way in our driveway.
Okay.
I would assume that's what he's representing.
I assume so with that it is a stop sign when you're taking the facility onto Colonial Way. So that's, needs to be reflected on the plan also.
Is that just, is that just something that needs to be reflected on the drawings there that we need to add a stop sign? Cause I believe with the businesses that are there currently, there is a stop sign at the end of Colonial before, uh, 125.
Yeah, I, 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 I think I was there just a short while ago. So I think it, I think he's referring to where the drive, you're coming out of the.
Onto Colonial.
Onto Colonial.
Okay. So out, out of the driveway on a Colonial. Okay. That, that makes sense. So I think Scott, we can add that certainly to the end of our driveway. I know right now we have kind of like a, a, a temporary driveway in there. So, you know, just so we get some of the material and stuff on the site. So we will certainly add a stop sign to the end of our driveway on, uh, Colonial before you enter onto Colonial.
The other thing, uh, size of vehicles bringing materials in and out, and is there enough room for them to maneuver, turn around, getting it out without backing onto Colonial Way?
Yes. So the, I think the basis of the design, I don't want to speak for Scott, but, uh, with, with the layout, the way that we have it with the, the parking in the back and enough room and lay down area in the back that allows for a full 18-wheeler to be able to bring materials in, turn around and safely maneuver around any of the parking spaces and pull up back onto Colonial Way.
So one thing I've, no, oh, sorry. Uh, one thing I'm noticing differently from this plan to, um, typical industrial plans that are submitted is usually the fire department requires access 360 degrees around the building. So it's got it, there usually has to be a complete drive around the building. And it doesn't look like that's the case here.
It has been my experience, a lot of it has to do with the size of the building. At 6,000 square feet, it's a size, not a size that I would typically see full 360-degree access around.
Yeah, I don't know. That's a, that's a question I would want to ask Rick about.
Yeah, we can ask him. I'll note that he didn't provide that as a comment.
Just to make sure he didn't overlook that, um, requirement.
I don't have any further questions.
I, I agree. Typically he says you have to access from, be able to access from all sides of the building. Doesn't necessarily mean you have to drive around, but he has to be able to access it.
Right. And it looks muted.
Yeah.
From this drawing.
So.
Where plants.
So it's, there's a swale that runs up along the west side of the building. And then, uh, you've got parking lot on three sides, the other three sides of the building. So he, he would certainly have access to all four sides. And it in fact is a parking on three out of those sides.
Yeah. It's just not consistent with what we've seen. And, um, even when you look at the, the town hall project, which is only 9,000 square feet, there is access around that entire building. All right. Do any of the, the board members have any other questions?
Uh, this is Ron Hall. Just one quick follow-up on a point that Jeff made. You know, the Knox box is going to be required, but also there's got to be kept, uh, you know, current key in the Knox, in the, in the Knox box for the gate. So that should, I think that should be a requirement we put in as well. You know, you can't just put the Knox box in. You got to put the key in that opens the gate. And if you change the padlock, whatever, you got to, you got to change the key.
Was that, Mr. Chairman?
Chair, this is.
Oh, sorry about it.
Oh, um, I don't, I definitely don't need to speak. I was just going to speak to the access thing related to the town hall. There won't be a driveway around the entire building in the town hall. I believe the fire code requirements, there's a certain distance that a truck needs to be, to be able to stretch a hose to all, uh, aspects of the building. And so the, um, the town hall being 9,000 square feet, as long as there's access from either end, that was enough to satisfy the code requirement. I'm guessing the same is true here on a smaller building. Uh, so just a point of clarification.
Okay. Very good.
Mr. Chairman, I do want to appreciate your, your, uh, the board in allowing me to, uh, present this application. Uh, again, I'm going to step out. Uh, my colleague Joel will fill in my shoes to the best he can. Uh, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lawler. Have a great night.
Thank you.
I think that was just a drive-by, wasn't it?
All right. If there's no other questions from the board, I believe we have enough information to accept this application as complete. We need some more information before we proceed and send it to DuBois and King. But I would like to, uh, if everyone else is willing, uh, accept the application as complete. And that would require a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we accept application 220-29-RC-20-DR as complete.
I second.
Motion made by Ron Hallard and seconded by Jeff Brand. Uh, Ron Hallard. Aye.
Aye.
Andy Knapp.
Aye.
Donna Masucci.
Donna Masucci, aye.
Steve Diamond.
Diamond, aye.
Jeff Brand.
Brand, aye.
James Jenison, aye. Uh, application is accepted as complete. And is the recommendation of staff that we continue pending review by DuBois and King and, um, uh, obviously receiving those other documents being the legible, um, lighting plan and, um, the other things we mentioned.
Uh, was this, uh, was this notified as a public meeting?
Um.
Yes.
Thanks.
Yes.
Probably should have opened that to public comments first.
Yeah. Now that we've accepted it, we want to open it for public comment before we take any other action.
I think that would be wise. Uh, if there's anyone out there that would like to speak to this, we'll open public comment. For those who are just joining us, you can click on the message box and type a message, or you can unmute your microphone and speak.
Hi, this is Barbara. I have a, you guys keep saying Rick Walker made the comments for Fire Chief. It was, um, his assistant Eric Lindsay, I believe, because Rick is the owner of the property.
Uh.
Thank you, Barbara.
Yeah.
I just, it was, I'll just, you know, in the, uh, comments that came, it, it was Walker. That's why we said Rick Walker.
Yeah, I know. I just wanted to clarify that where he is the owner.
Thank you. That's important to note. Uh, any public comments? Hearing none, we'll close public comment.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I think that, uh, it would be appropriate, especially where there's no AOT for this, to, um, have this forwarded to DuBois and King for review. Um, and, uh, and if people agree, then I would, I will make a motion to continue this pending the review by DuBois and King.
Before we move on, I'd just like to add, uh, if he's meeting the snow, uh, code requirement, that's fine. The property owner might want to have him a, uh, a snow off the roof in a worst case scenario, so it's no, whether an access to the roof or to know that they can put a ladder in certain spot, actually whatever.
Steve, we only caught about a third of that.
And I believe, uh, I'll summarize his comments if I can. It was just a notification to the owner that, that the dangers of snow loads and roof clearing.
Access, encourage them to look for, I'd say hatch or an otherwise a plan on how to get snow, uh, off the roof.
Um, oh, Mr. Marshall, I just wanted to mention the only other thing in particular, especially where I recommend you send it to DuBois and King. On this particular lot, it is a lot of record and it is not subject to the wetland buffer setbacks. So I just wanted to point that out to folks so that they understood, um, looking at the plans, why the, the wetlands do go rather close to the, um, the building and area. And that was, uh, another, um, concern, I guess, but another observation to make when they're doing their, their review, when DuBois and King does their review.
Yeah, I think I add on to that. If, so if you look at the zoning ordinance, uh, any property that was approved under, uh, for a subdivision, any unimproved can be built on without regard to buffers if it, if it predated March 13th, 2001. And this, uh, as noted on the plan, this was, uh, an approved subdivision, unapproved, I think, I think 85. So.
They're actually exempt from the setbacks too, because of setbacks of any lot created before 97.
Yeah, but he did, he did, he is using the current setback. So, you know, that's, that's not a problem, but they are, I mean, you can look at the location of the building, the driveways, they, if they had to observe the buffer regulations, they would be within the buffers, uh, you know, in, in, on the west and east sides. However, they are exempt because they predate 13th of March, 2001.
Very good. All right. So we have a motion to, um, correct, to, uh, continue pending review by DuBois and King.
I haven't made it yet because I was just waiting. Does everybody agree that?
Uh, I agree, but I have one point to make. If, um, there is, kind of related to what, uh, Steve was talking about, if you have the, I see an overhead property door on the, the slope side of the building. Um, I believe per OSHA, if you use that as an emergency exit, it's got to have like, uh, an awning over it or something to protect it from the snow coming down blocking the door.
This is Jesse Anderson. I, I think the easiest solution I can get with, uh, you know, I can get with Scott and Joel and we can figure out a solution. I, I know that there are, uh, like snow guards that can be installed. We've done them for some of our clients that go on the building that deflect the snow. So it can't fall directly over any, any exit of the building. Uh, so for instance, in, in emergency exit, uh, you know, there'd be a guard over there that would not let any snow fall directly over that door. Or the, the overhead door that we will have in that southwest corner.
The building requirements for this building would have to be met, um, when they come in for their building permit. It's actually, um, that's where it gets dealt with.
Right. I'm familiar with that, John, but I just wanted to make it clear to the, uh, the applicant that, that, that'll probably be something that'd be required down the road.
All right. We're all in agreement that this is going to be sent to DuBois and King for review. I will make a motion that, uh, that application 220-29-RC-20-SR, uh, be continued. Pending review by DuBois and King. Now, that, that's an unknown date. Typically we continue it to a specific date. Uh, Marshall, what do we do in this case?
I, I would pick, I would pick a reasonable date and, um, if they need it, that's wonderful. And if they don't, they can ask to continue, but I would definitely pick a date.
All right.
What's, uh, DuBois and King doing right now for reviews? June, middle of June?
I'd say June 16th. If that's, I mean, what, how does the applicant feel about that?
I did want to put in my two cents there, so I guess my frustration and my concern would be, you know, we have a certified engineering company designing the layout to meet the Town of Barrington's codes and procedures and my, my outlook would be, you know, why have another party do the same exact thing? I'm open to hearing, hearing how this would benefit the Town of Barrington, but also I am, you know, we are very eager. We want to get this project off the ground. We want to move forward with this. And at the end of the day, you know, we will be having Scott and Norway Plains representing us and performing all of this work and engineering to the Town of Barrington to meet your requirements.
Sure.
So I'm a little bit baffled on why having another party, you know, kind of supersede the engineering design.
No, Mr. Anderson, I'll answer that question. Typically, I mean, we have lots of engineers come before us that are unfamiliar with our regulations and will oftentimes miss several things. That's why we have our own engineering firm review all applications, so you're not being singled out. It is completely and absolutely standard procedure for us to send these out for third-party review because it's just the nature of the game. They work in towns all over the state and all the requirements are different and in one, you know, like the lighting thing here, that person may have designed that lighting for Portsmouth thinking it was close enough and it was going to pass Barrington. And it's, there's a lot of things that are often not caught that our engineering firm does catch. So it's just, it's just typical standard practice.
So Jamie.
Yep.
Jamie, I would, in this case, maybe if they looked in particular at the drainage and not the whole overall plan, but to do like a second look at the drainage and then look at the first meeting in June, if we can get the plans to them, they usually can get right on it right away and we're not dragging out as long.
Sure. I don't have a problem with that.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. I, that, why would we deviate from our normal plan? That doesn't make any sense to me.
Well, we can move up the date and because they don't have the wetland buffer issue to deal with, I think that we can focus them on not looking at that. DuBois and King does have a history of looking at things that aren't pertinent, wouldn't you agree?
Yeah, the drainage issue.
That's the key issue, the drainage.
But what I could advise out of that is here's where it's not applicable. Please validate you agree with that and then move on from it. Don't dwell on it.
Yeah.
I would never change our practice for one applicant, especially from the standpoint that the applicant is a person who works for the town that could very easily be misconstrued.
Fair enough.
Yeah, I'd say normal process and to follow up on Jamie, you know, you, we understand, you have your engineers, but our job is to look at both, are you complying with the regulations, but also validating. You know, we have to be independent, so we, we, we need to show that independence and that includes in the engineering involved in the facility. And the board per se, we're not, we're not engineers, although some of us have engineer backgrounds. This is not our forte and so we rely on experts to advise the board.
So I will recommend that you get those, those items submitted back in, the lighting, the updated lighting, illegible lighting, the gate, stop sign, things we mentioned throughout, and we'll ship them off to DuBois and King and we'll put you on for June 2nd. And if it's not back, we'll, we'll deal with it at that time. Does that, that work?
Yeah, that's fine.
Can I just ask, and this is Jesse Anderson, the owner again, can I just ask one quick question there?
Sure.
You know, how long, how long is it going to pro, prolong the process of getting the approvals? Because I would like to point, you know, during this uncharted time with this whole COVID thing, we, we move forward and I take care of our employees, our employees, you know, this is a welding company, right? So I mean, we're going to be installing a steel building. You know, and any little aspect of getting our employees to do things, to move forward and stay strong is, you know, what I am all about. So I do want to stress that I want to push this date to as soon as possible, obviously. So when we have a little bit of downtime right now with everything that's going on in the economy, I can put my crew on something like this to keep them going before we aspect to something that, you know, I don't want to go, right? You know, I don't want to be doing loans to pay payroll or anything like that. This is something that we can do to move forward with. So if the lighting is the big concern, I mean, is it, is it that big of a concern or are there any?
Mr. Anderson. Yeah, I appreciate your commitment to your work. It's, there's no lag time on our side due to this. I think that DuBois and King is moving at their typical pace. So, and it, and it's not, we can't make special exceptions because you want to move faster. The lighting, you know what I mean? The lighting needs to be updated so we can read it and as soon as we get that, we'll put it through and it's going to move as fast as it moves. It's not like we can, you know, piecemeal parts to make it go one way or another under the circumstances. I think the circumstances are what they are. I don't believe DuBois and King is being hamstrung by the COVID and that it's going to take any longer. It's, as soon as you get that stuff to us, we'll submit it and they'll review it and get it back.
So if I'm understanding, it's the three items. It's the lighting, it's the lighting, it's a stop sign and the gate correctly? And maybe the drainage would be, I guess there was a question about the drainage with the, you know, if you do not pave the back end of the parking lot?
No, the drainage is fine.
The drainage is key to the review. That's the, the biggest concern is to make sure that DuBois and King takes a good look at the drainage plan, which they'll, they'll look at the drainage, they'll evaluate the drainage for you. That's, that, that would be my, my key on this particular application.
My last question is, at what cost and who, who covers the cost of a third-party evaluation for the Town of Barrington?
So that the, DuBois and King will do an estimate for you, but the cost, the cost goes to the applicant.
Okay. Okay. I might need to stew on that a little bit because it seems a little bit unfair to, for, for the applicant to pay a PE company to design a, an engineered service for, and to meet your town criteria and then I still have to pay another third-party to come in and review the company that I just paid to design a building that meets your criteria.
It's in the regulations, Mr. Anderson.
And, and we see it unfortunately, every two weeks we see it and engineers don't.
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. I apologize.
No, no, I was just saying that we, every two weeks we see it where engineers don't meet the criteria because they don't, quite honestly, they don't read the book.
But Norway is a trusted company for the Town of Barrington, correct?
There's lots of.
They've done multiple projects with the Town of Barrington?
That's not, that's, yeah, that's not to be disputed, but it doesn't change, it doesn't change the protocol.
Mr. Anderson, we can't, we can't waive you because you went to Norway Plains or somebody else. That would be discriminatory, you know, so we, we have to do it the same way all the time.
Can I pick my own third-party engineering company to review the drawings?
No.
Okay, but then you're discriminating. So you're telling me that, you're telling me that I, you're not going to discriminate against me for going to Norway, but you're also telling me that I have to go to your company to do the design review? So how does, how does that make sense and how is that fair for me if you're telling me that I have to go to one specific company to do the review of the drawings that Norway did for me?
This company is, has a contract with the town. They are providing.
But Norway has also done multiple, multiple sites for the Town of Barrington in the Town of Barrington.
Mr. Anderson, excuse me, Mr. Anderson, I do appreciate your point, but it's not a point to argue. It really isn't. It, it's, it's not a winning battle here. It's the, it's the process. It is the standard practice.
Jesse and Jasmine Anderson.
It, it won't, it won't, it won't be deviated from, from our standpoint, you know. I apologize if it upsets you, but it, it just, it's not a point that we will say you can go out and get a different reviewer or we don't have to do a third-party review because you don't like it. That's not going to happen. It's, it's unfortunate if you feel that way, but that's unfortunately the way it works for every other applicant that comes before the board and you know, I don't want to spend too much time dwelling on it, but it is, it is what it is.
And to follow, follow up and reinforce that point, Jamie, you know, you said illegible lighting plan, but I would like to add illegible and compliant lighting plan because from what Scott said, it doesn't sound like it complied.
Right, and that, you know, so that's the, you know, Mr. Anderson, that's the point we try to make is that that lighting plan was sent out to a reputable company. We don't dispute that, but it doesn't always meet our requirements because there may be a little tweak from one town to the next. And our engineers are asked, the ones that, DuBois and King, to look at our specific, be familiar with our specific and then compare and contrast what has been drawn and what is in our regulations and point out those discrepancies to us. So if you go out and hire a third-party, we don't know what you've told them, you know, so again, it's, it's not a point to be argued. It's just unfortunately the practice and I think you'd find it any town you go to, to deal with.
And I will point out, yes, Norway Plains has done a lot of business in Barrington and they should get it right, but they've submitted many plans that the board has reviewed in the past and we have found deficiencies, so we need to perform our independent review.
I mean, the board, I will send you, I've just got to go, it's, it's in here in the emails and I believe it, it was already sent to you. There is a PDF with, that is legible. You have to enlarge it in order to read it in a, in a digital format. Obviously, you didn't get a hard copy, but the, the readable PDF is out there and available to you, so I'll make sure you have it, okay?
All right.
Mr. Anderson, with respect to the timeline and fixing, doing the few fixes here for the plans with respect to the illumination, stop sign, the gate, I, I can, based on past experience, when we provide it back and this illumination issue, this isn't the first time it's come up, that these, these problems got corrected within a handful of days. This is not a big issue or work, amount of work to fix these things, so that, that shouldn't, that shouldn't incur any significant delay in getting the plans over and getting them reviewed.
This is Joel. I think he, I think I heard say that it. So yes, we'll, we'll work on the, we're going to work tomorrow, we'll be able to work on this tomorrow for you.
I don't think the dog agrees with you.
Oh, sorry, I'll mute. That's mine.
Thank you, Joel.
I did figure out where the mute is now that I have the email zone.
Well, I think we're carrying public comment a little too far for letting the dogs play.
Jamie and Jeff, I believe Mr. Anderson hung up in the middle of your response.
Okay.
The Norway Plains will have, will work on the changes tomorrow.
Great, thank you, Joel. All right, we have a motion to continue to.
Yeah, I meant, I just said pending the review. We'll make that to June 2nd.
All right.
So we're going to have a busy night that night because we just voted to continue Barrington shores.
Yeah.
He is now joining.
All right.
Certainly, we're all home, so we can, you know, we can do this, you know, get a blanket and.
There we go. Do we have a second?
I second.
So motion by Jeff Brand, seconded by Ron Allard. Roll call, vote. Masucci?
Masucci, aye.
Knapp?
Aye.
Allard?
Allard, aye.
Diamond? Brand? I got, I heard Steve, aye. Brand?
Brand, aye.
Jennison, aye. This application is continued pending review till June 2nd. Thank you, Joel. Have a good night.
Thank you, guys. Be safe, please.
Yep.
Next up, we have.
Is now exiting.
We'll jump on number five. We got, we got, let's see what we got here. We got reports from other committees. Anything else out there we need to talk about?
I have a question, Barbara. Did we decide when they were coming back from regional planning to do a presentation on the next?
June 2nd.
June 2nd?
I have June 2nd.
Can we bump them out to 16th, maybe?
He couldn't do that date.
Okay, we, we can't do that presentation on the 2nd now that we've got, you know, this case, we just continue plus Barrington Campgrounds.
Yeah, I'm afraid Barrington is going to be a long, a long one.
I already have seven letters from a butter.
Yeah. Can, can you see if they can do, well, that puts us in July. Wow.
All right, well, whenever, after that date, they could accommodate this.
Well, I can check the second meeting in June or the 7th of July.
Yeah, that'd be great if you could. Thank you.
All right, I will.
Anything else? Other business that may be coming for the board? And we have a request for a building permit at 90 Flower Drive, a private road for Mark and Darlene Morrow. Any questions on that?
The men. And the septic system.
Steve, your mic is still, still messed up.
Yeah, Steve.
The septic system?
Yep.
Is in a new location. How close is that to neighboring well?
I can't hear Steve.
He's asking how close is the new well to the neighbor, I believe.
Well, in order to get the permit from the state, if he's going to install a new system, wouldn't they have to know all that and prove it?
The state did approve the septic design. The town has no authority over it.
All right. I'm just reading aloud. Yeah, this, it looks like they're putting an in-law above the garage. Is that correct?
Yes, it is. And that's the reason why he's got to get this because it's a, an additional use, even though there's not another building being built.
Gotcha. All right. The board is on board with sending the typical, our letter. We're all in agreeance. Yes. All right, I'll read the letter. Yeah, the Barrington Planning Board on May 5th, 2020, meaning expressed without objection to send a letter to the select board stating that they knew of no pending projects or conditions that would hinder the issuing of a building permit for map 112 lot 23 located on Flower Drive. The board recommends that care be given not to allow the sightline to change depending on the height of the disposal system to be installed. Any damage to the dirt section of Flower Drive on the way to this lot during construction will be at the homeowner's expense. Owners are already members of the Flower Drive Road Association. All in favor, I will do a roll call in favor of sending that. Donna?
Aye.
Knapp?
Aye.
Allard?
Allard, aye.
Diamond?
Diamond, aye.
Brand?
Aye.
Jennison, aye. The letter shall be sent. Anything else the board wants to just?
Steve, when Connor and I first, I tried this Microsoft team and I was having a problem with some of my audio. I did take in, I had the video up on the screen, but I dialed in with my cell phone and then muted my microphone on my computer and it worked very well. I have since straightened out the audio on my computer, but that, that might be an alternative.
Yeah.
We're losing a lot of what you're saying.
I'm using Lennon. But the ombel is unofficial.
But the OML is unofficial.
Yeah, we didn't get what you said.
If you have the opportunity to call in, I think that would be your best in the future. Unless you're saying that's what you're doing.
There's a piece of software I'm going to that might help.
All right. Sounds good. All right. If there's no objections, we will adjourn the meeting.
Are we going to go for?
Eighty minutes, eighty minutes.
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. I'm going to.
Oh, I have one thing too. I did resend because he sent me that back on, I want to say April 30th, the revised lighting plan. So I did just reemail it out to you and I believe I sent it to Connor also. So check to see if you have it. Like I said, you'll have to enlarge it in order to be able to read it. But it, it was legible when it came in the, the second time to me.
Marsha, are you sending that to my town email?
Um, I did it to the group email here, so I'd have to.
Oh, yeah, we got.
Can, can you guys send stuff to my town email? Because I, otherwise I just don't seem to get it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we also got, we got, we got Estes on June 2nd too.
Like, I'm just missing documents galore.
So, so you have an ANAP, an ANAP email, right?
Ten dot NH dot gov.
Yeah.
And Mosh, I don't see that email, by the way.
Barbara, did you get it?
Yes, I did, but you did not send it to Ron.
Oh, okay. Can you send it to him? I'm going to update my, whatever one I used.
I feel slighted.
Well, I don't think I'm in there either, Ron. I'm looking. I don't see it.
Did I get, I get, it was, it was whatever email list I clicked on. I've got to check those.
All right. Let's, we'll review the minutes for April 21st. Do we have any comments, corrections, notes? All quiet. Hearing no objections, comments. Approve the minutes as written.
Abstain.
Mister Knapp abstaining.
I wasn't, so.
We'll do a roll call for those just to be official. Brand?
Brand, aye.
Diamond?
Diamond, aye.
Masucci?
Masucci, aye.
Allard?
Allard, aye.
Jennison, aye. Minutes are approved. Anything else before we adjourn?
We're getting better at this.
I know. If we can keep the load light, we'll be, we'll be all right.
Well, we already blew that for June 2nd.
Rest up for June 2nd. It'll be a late one.
Yep. Bring your pillow, your blanket.
Have a great night, everybody.
Have a good night.
You too.
All right.
Bye.
Multiple people are now exiting.